All right, thanks everyone for coming to the meeting. Is there any agenda additions or deletions? Okay, hearing none. We have our regular meeting minutes from April 25th up here.
Having looked them over, I'm going to accept them as presented.
I'll second that.
Is there any corrections or deletions in those minutes? Hearing none, hold on in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Mr. Chairman, having noted that I wasn't present for that meeting, there you have it.
All right, road commissioners report.
I actually haven't been, I've been out of, with a hip replacement, but I've been in contact with the crew. They've been working on great roads, finishing up and doing other things around town. And then next week, the 16th and 17th, and Monday, Tuesday, is that 15th?
Sixteenth and seventeenth.
Sixteenth and seventeenth, the Kingsley Wooden Bridge will be closed. They're going to do another scope of work on it for the engineers. From, I believe, seven in the morning to six at night, those two days. Just to let everybody know. What we're going to do is I'm going to have the crew post this week that it's going to be closed at them dates. So anybody that lives on that side of town, be prepared.
We put a posting up at the... Oh, let's see, I'm thinking on 103, what's the name at Little General Store that's up there?
Gouche's.
Yeah, there, and a transfer station, and a post office.
And a website?
Yes, absolutely, a website.
That's about all I have for...
There was some discussion in the past and a request from a person living in town about town entry signs. And Katie, you want to give a brief report on that? I know that you had discussed.
Yeah, you guys had asked me to reach out to the state about like what it takes to get a sign up on a state road. So, no fixed object can be in there right of way. If it's outside of the right of way, it's okay. But there is a permit you have to fill out, and then they want like exact locations, and then they'll help with right of way stuff. So, kind of my question to you is like where you want to go with this? Do you want to figure out how many signs you need and where they are? Or kind of how you want to start the process, if you want to?
Well, it was suggested by the individual that came here that he thought on Middle Road, on both ends of the Middle Road, and then over on 103, or 133 and Cortlandt Road.
Yeah, you're talking Route 7.
Walker Mountain Road, excuse me. And both ends of the Creek Road. So, there's probably about six signs that we would need.
Six, yeah.
So, you want us to make a motion on that?
Like fill out the permit and get it started? There is no fee attached to that, confirmed.
The other option that I know Ludlow did, and I don't know if we reached out to them, is they found a landowner that owned land outside of the right of way and made an arrangement with the landowner so that it was off the state's right of way.
Yeah.
But yet, visible and high enough so that... And in some cases, they even added like solar lights to them so that at night they were lit up and people could see them. So I don't know if that's an avenue we want to pursue because if it's off the state's right of way, takes the state out of the equation. We don't have to even mess with them. That's, that's an option.
Well, to move this...
I'd like to see what we're gonna, what you guys are proposing, what it's gonna...
That's the other thing, too.
And what it's going to cost before I approve anything.
Because we don't have any, I mean, we don't even have a design, we don't even have anything. Or a size. I mean, how big, how...
I don't want to put up a billboard for thousands of dollars.
No.
Most of them are like four by four, roughly.
I was going to say, I think Ludlow's down there, I mean, I drove by it every day when I worked down there. It was like probably, it was an oval, and it was probably, like you say, four, probably four by four. Might not even, it might not even have been that tall. Might have only been like four by two or four by three.
So, hearing some of the concerns, as Art and Bob mentioned, when we table this, and let's get some pricing.
Well, wasn't it one of the things that we came up with, I'm sorry to jump on, but one of the things we said is weren't we going to talk about maybe doing like a Clarendon Elementary, like competition for a design?
So, that's another thing that you guys could discuss if you want to start that process.
Because I think that's like, that's the first step. Before we can even talk about where they're going to go or what we're going to do, we got to talk about, I mean, school is rapidly coming to a close. Speaking as an administrator, it's going to be here before you know it. So, John?
I know there is a sign size restriction before you end up in Act 250.
Correct.
I cannot remember what it is, but it's not really...
It's not terribly big.
I'm thinking, I don't know why I have like 24 square feet in the back of my head, but that may not be right either. It's not a huge number.
It's, it's not terribly big. Yeah, that's something you should be able to, probably Katie, find it right online.
It should be in our zoning, I think. We referenced the size, even though it's, it's either zoning or planning. I can't remember, that's how I know it, from the planning commission.
Okay.
Because we have to ask about that as part of the site plan review.
I know it's not terribly big.
No.
I know that, I know that, because then you do, you fall into Act 250.
Unless you're the state, they can do whatever you want.
Correct, correct.
I can't believe that for a minute, John. But to your point, Rob, about bringing this to school for maybe a little contest or something, there is time limits because, as you pointed out, so much the end of the year. And if we're going to do this, we would have to contact the school soon, and so...
Yeah, like this week.
So, I'm not sure, you know, how would we propose that to a school?
I, I think you just do a very, like, Town of Clarendon is considering putting up entry signs to the town. Would love to have a competition, and it's possible that your design may be picked. And just, and hopefully you can make contact, it's especially helpful if you make contact with the art teacher because that's something they might even weave into their lesson plans and be like, hey, this is what we're gonna, we're actually going to sketch designs this week, or something like that. Or a design, or an oval or something, like if you had an oval, what would you draw in this to welcome people to Clarendon? But, I mean, for us, we're 20, 24 school days is all that's left. So, I mean, it's, we are right up against...
Clarendon does have a really strong summer program, too.
That's true.
There's a lot of art that's part of that, too.
Yep, that's a good point.
Where it tends to be younger kids, but you may find that even if it went over into the summer program, that might still work.
Sure, that's true, too.
Katie, can we contact the school, both the high school and the elementary school, and see if there's any interest, first of all? And if there is an interest, let's meet with, as was suggested, maybe an art teacher or somebody down there that might be able to give us a little bit more insight as to whether, what competition or something like that. And let's try and get something back from them by the end of the week.
So you want me to reach out to the Mill River School Board and...
Yeah.
...the middle of elementary?
Well, I think you're talking about keeping this in the elementary school, aren't you? I mean, Mill River's all the towns, so that gets a little more complicated. I think I'd keep it to Clarendon Elementary myself.
All right, well, that's a good thing.
And I think the one thing we could decide tonight is, are we doing an oval? Are we doing a rectangle or a square? That's all we got to decide.
Do you want like a theme or any requirements on it either, like...
Welcome to the Town of Clarendon, what would you put on it? I mean, I, I'd leave it open. Because I'll tell you what, kids will come up with probably some of the most interesting stuff that none of us around this table will ever think about. I mean, truthfully.
So am I asking if they would be interested in that, the competition type?
Right, and if that's the case, then explain to them that I think that we should have a square sign, not an oval sign. Because...
Take a poll, what's everybody think? Oval, square, or rectangle?
I leave it to the option of the one drawn.
Them decide.
Let them decide.
I think oval would probably look as good as anything if you're going to do it.
Probably oval, you have problems with the framework.
That's what you're thinking.
If you want to leave it open, I'm fine with that. I'm just, you, you may want some parameters. I mean, that's... But you're, what are you worried about with an oval? What, what'd you say?
Your posts being square and stuff. I don't know how Ludlow is, how do they hang it?
I think they had it, if my memory serves you right, it's pressure-treated posts with a backing of some sort, and then it's mounted on the backing. I'm pretty sure.
It looked up with angle brackets, too.
Because they, they actually built theirs with a little, a little roof over it with like solar lights shining down off the roof onto it. It's a pretty sharp looking thing. If you've never noticed it, when you're driving into Ludlow from this side, it actually sits kind of in that meadow to the right. You kind of have to look over because it is off the state right of way. So they didn't run into it.
Something so fancy like that, we only want maybe just on each end of the Mill Road.
Well, I mean, that's, that's something that can be figured out later, but...
Because that's adding to the expense, I would think. What do you think, Art?
See what they come up with.
All right.
You got to find out how big we can go first.
Well, that's, yeah.
I mean, I don't want to mess with Act 250, so...
I don't think any of us want to mess with Act 250.
Can we establish that, then find out size that wouldn't cause us to dial half the state bureaucracy?
I mean, the other idea is if you give them a sheet of paper, it can be made to whatever size you're going to go, so... So, investigate, you don't need a motion, then just investigate.
No, just want to...
That's fine.
Investigate it.
And then if we have to have a special meeting just to, okay, to move this along quicker.
We hope we wouldn't have to do that.
I know. But it all depends, would you say 24 days?
Well...
If it means, it's the difference between doing it and doing it right, if that even means, you know...
Summer program?
Well, yeah, I mean, moving it into a summer program, but even that, or starting fresh in the fall and giving them time to actually come up with something of quality, I mean, it's not going to be the end of the world either.
It's true.
Let's wait till we get some feedback.
Yeah, I mean, the school administration might be, like, let's wait.
See how open they are to it.
All right, let me do this. Anything else under highway, any questions for Cash? All right, warrants are drifting.
Yeah, I need those, actually.
Yep. Guests, we have some folks that want to talk a little bit, so... What I'm thinking is, let's get this conversation going about the committee.
Sorry, can we approve the liquor permit before we go there? That was, well, the...
Doing the Gouchburg liquor license on the agenda?
Yep.
She's waiting to take it, she's going to bring it up to Mottley tomorrow.
Oh, okay. And let me see.
Whole board.
Yeah, the whole board has to sign it.
So I will make a, I'll make a motion that we jump in the agenda down to the Gouchburg liquor license and do that item next, prior to, prior to guests and public comments.
I'll second that.
All right, and that, in your motion, you want to say that we all have to sign it?
Well, we haven't approved it yet, that's just to move on the agenda first.
All right, hold on in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
And now I'll make a motion that we approve the Gouchburg liquor license to be signed on all the board.
I'll second.
Everything's in order?
Yeah, everything, yes, it looks like it. I just was looking at it before the meeting started. Hold on in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Passed. Yes, this one's my... All right, let's go to that committee, so we don't have to have people sitting there after me. We had discussed at the last meeting, having two select board members for a special committee and five members from the community.
So just before you go any further, you want a motion to change the agenda again?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion then that we, again, go out of order and go to the inclusion committee part of our agenda.
I'll second that.
Hold on in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I don't know why we just can't move it.
Popular.
All right, interested candidates. First of all, let me find out which two select board members. Bob, would you, would you be willing to...
Knowing some circumstances back in the family a little bit, I just assume not. I won't totally rule it out, but there's some things that have happened in the past.
Cash, can you sit on that committee?
I get so much stuff going on, that's my problem. With meetings and stuff, not only here, but other things, functions and stuff.
All right, Rob?
With the end of school, I don't see how I have, I mean, we, we talked about doing this hopefully by Jan, by June 13th. And, I mean, we're, we're in our budget time. So I, I literally just ran from a school budget meeting to get here, so I... I don't see that I'm gonna, I, I just don't see that I can commit to it right now. But what... I thought, I thought Bob had expressed interest last time, so I was coming in hopeful that tonight you were good to go.
Yeah, there's some other things that I didn't mention, but at, at this time, I'll say this. I'll step up at this point, but if things come to the point where I have to, I will step away also.
Okay, so we're going, so you're going into an open, that if necessary?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'm okay with that, I don't know, as long as everybody else is.
Yeah. Art?
I don't have time, I really don't have time. I guess I don't have a choice, though, do I?
No.
New guy.
Here's a new guy.
The...
This might need that back.
The two, yeah, the two select board members that we appoint will decide when the meetings would be held. So that would give you guys a little leeway. Art and Bob. I can't do it because I have too much personal conflict. And, you know, my kid played soccer with a couple of your kids, stuff like this, and I don't want to, unless it's absolutely necessary, be involved with it. So, Art, are you, can you do it?
I'll do it.
All right, and Bob, you can do it.
I'm going to start.
Okay.
Let's put it that way, yeah.
If need be, then I can fill in, but I just wanted to point that out. Now we have to pick...
So, here's my question, then, because we normally do this and we typically, at least for many of our other types of things, we sometimes name an alternate, are you willing to be named the alternate?
Yeah. Sorry, it was you.
If, if something was to come up?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. The folks that are interested are Marjorie, Sutter, Richard Lee, Monica Kiefer, right? Is her last? Okay, I'm sorry. Maddie Aiken, John McKenna, and Tom Miles. So it's one, two, three, four, five, six. John, you willing to spend some time to do this, it sounds like?
Absolutely.
All right. And Richard Lee?
Maddie couldn't be here, but she...
Pardon?
Maddie couldn't be here, she has a conflict with a kid meeting.
Okay.
But she's definitely willing to do it, too.
All right.
Gave me permission to speak for her on that one.
Monica, are you willing to, you're willing to come in and understand the ground rules? Is when the two select board members call a meeting, would be good to have you guys come down here at some point. We'll give you due notice, though, so that it's not two minutes before the meeting starts. Tom Miles?
Yes.
You're willing to, when there's a meeting being suggested, to come down to the meeting, right?
Mike, I think they're all willing to do it.
No, no, I, yeah.
I'm holding a piece of paper, I want to know on film that you're...
Right, yeah.
...willing to do that, in case somebody has any questions. All right.
Marjorie's here, too?
Yes, I was just going to ask Marjorie.
I'm going, yes.
Okay, for the record, to help Art out. All right, the select board, let's go. Anybody have any issues with Marjorie being on this?
So what I'd like to do is I'll just go ahead and make a motion at this time that I, I personally, you know, we said we wanted to keep this somewhere around seven.
Yes.
Your total with the two select board members is eight, I don't see that as an issue. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the slate of interested candidates to participate and name in the process, Mike Clopson, as the select board alternate, if necessary.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, hold on in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thanks for making that motion. All right, so the two main select board members will get together and then we'll notify everybody, and we're going to have our first meeting, and I hope it's soon. Art, Bob?
At the very soonest, early next week, for me.
Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah, I didn't check my calendar before I left the house.
But would that be...
I know, I got a couple of appointments over to Dartmouth.
Would that be afternoon or evening? Or morning?
As fast as time of day, either one will work for me. It's going to be more dependent on Art, he can see how's the business up there.
For the interest of time, I, I don't think we need to iron this out here, I think that...
But while these people are sitting right here...
They will work, so it would be greater if it, it would be nice if it could be at, you know, dinnertime or there.
Okay, so I think, so I think...
After 6:00, that's what I was trying to establish.
So I mean, the record can be noted that the request is evening, and I think from there, we just got to let the crew talk to each other and figure it out.
And...
Who had seconded in that motion?
I did.
Uh, Cash did.
And we'd like to get, before you leave, everybody's phone number so that we can have contact points. And if you want to take this...
Probably phone number and email.
Yeah.
If we don't, if we don't have your email, probably the best way to do that, and then it can end up at Katie's desk.
Oh, we'll, we'll make a copy, and then Katie, you can have the contact information as well as Bob and Art.
Because I want a copy of that.
Yeah. All right.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Mike, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, you were talking too softly. Why is it that you were, that you didn't want to be on this?
Well, for instance, with John, his two sons and my son play soccer together, and so I've had a long connection there. I don't know if that would, John knows me well enough to know if that would impede my thoughts, but... And Maddie as well, with her, and that's the only reason. And I want to make that known so that somebody can't come back and say, well, you're friends and...
Okay, oh, I just couldn't hear what you were saying, thank you.
You're the first person that ever told me that.
No, seriously?
Yeah.
Oh, every meeting I've been to, I can't under, I can't hear anything you say. I've turned on my hearing aids. And I stop, I can't hear.
Oh, okay, yeah. I'm sorry, I'll try to, I'll try to get out there a little louder.
Thank you.
Project.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion now that we return to our regularly scheduled program and go back up to guests and work our way through the rest of our meeting.
Okay, are there any guests who would like to speak?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Hold on in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, is there any guest? Any public comments? All right, any old business? Special meeting warning approval.
This is for the article from town meeting?
Yep.
Can, is there, is there a copy of it somewhere? I just haven't seen it, that's all. Is it underneath that, right there?
Uh, might be, but...
Because we probably, we should read it, read it so everybody knows what it is, that's all, that's what I'm thinking.
Oh, that's the signs.
Here it is. Can we read it?
Yeah.
Uh, warning, for a special town meeting, June 13th of 2022, the legal voters of the Town of Clarendon are hereby warned and notified to meet at the Clarendon Town Hall, Monday, June 13th, 2022, at 5:30 PM for the purpose of voting from floor Article One. Article One stated, shall the voters authorize the treasurer pursuant of 32 VSA 4791 to collect current taxes, signed and dated today by the selectmen and obviously issued to the town clerk? This as an explanation, we had a slight kerfuffle. Because of COVID, that article a year ago had to be on the ballot. This year, it was supposed to go back to the floor, and it got printed opposite. So, rather than happening on the floor, it, it was supposed to be on the ballot, it didn't make the ballot, it was supposed to be on the floor, you get it, it just, it totally didn't happen. So, the long story short, this is going to fix the problem, make the state happy, and we're...
It makes it legal so that I can collect property taxes.
Yeah, so, it's really...
I'm sorry.
It's really a, kind of a simple, simple...
Formality.
Formality, and I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Is that the date of our regular meeting, in June?
It is, right? Because we're technically...
It's been 30 to 40 days for the warning to the meeting, so I had to wait.
For anybody who shows up, we're just going to do it from the floor, right? Yeah, so it's not even, it's not even a ballot, it's just going to be, I assume I have to step back into moderator role and just say...
Basically announced the motion.
Okay. Should be pretty simple. We just got to hope we've got two or three townspeople here to do it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Good. All right, there's been a motion made, been seconded, we've had a brief discussion. Hold on in favor of the motion, and we all have to sign it. Please say aye.
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 And anyone opposed? All right. All right, Kingsley Bridge Stream Gage approval. Gauge approval.
I have a little update for you guys for that. Lee Rosenberg, Roseberg, he was from Stone Environmental, and they were doing an assessment for the airport and wanted to put a gauge in at the Kingsley Covered Bridge. So I reached out to JB McCarthy, who's the project manager for the Kingsley Bridge, to ask him if that would run into their construction activity next spring. So, Lee and JB are actually going to meet next week when they're doing the bridge inspection to see if it will work or not. But Lee wanted to be on speakerphone and kind of explain what's going on, so...
So not to be the stick in the mud, but if they're meeting next week, there's nothing for us to talk about tonight.
Basically.
So I don't think we need to take the time to put him on speakerphone, in my opinion.
But we notice him right after the meeting.
I mean, they've got to meet, we don't even know if this is doable. So I, I just make a motion that this gets tabled until after their meeting.
Okay.
Second to that?
I'll second that.
Hold on in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Rob.
Not, not to be the stick in the mud, but just, what are we going to talk about? We're going to sit here and listen to something that we don't even know if it's going to happen.
Just got to go.
Art, second to that?
No, Cash.
Cash seconded, I think. Art said aye, hold on.
I said aye. I said aye. Oh, it's only just begun, my man.
Two warriors.
Yeah. Transfer station attendant, uh, that was posted and we only had one individual, am I correct? And, uh, that would be Rick Bursaw's brother Charlie. And, um, he worked at the school for a long time, at the high school, as a janitor and stuff like this. And, uh, he has some other backing, you know. Uh, responsible for, uh, floor, the school cleaning, stuff like this, so I think that he knows what garbage looks like. I'll make the motion that we approve. Charlie. Charlie Bursaw. Yeah. For attendant.
I'll, I'll second that.
Can I add to that? I believe last time we lost some play, we hired, we actually did a three-month or something like that. Like a, not a, almost like probation or something.
Oh, the starting period.
Starting period.
The tri, yeah.
So, I didn't know if that needs to be in our motion here to.
No, because that's already established.
That's policy.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I think we've set the precedent, and I think you're, I think it's understood that we're doing a.
Three month.
Ninety day.
So, Katie, you, if this motion passes, you'll get in touch with him, correct?
Yeah.
And I, I, I mean, that being said, I would make him aware that that's the way, you know, that's the way we function, just so he's aware.
All right, so there's been a motion made and a second ended. We've had good discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Heidi, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Um, just that I've given you each a copy of the budget status to date as of today. Um, if anyone in the public would like a copy, I can certainly print you off one. I'll just come to you at the end of the meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have after your review. That's all I have.
Uh, Katie, do you have anything you'd like to report?
I do not tonight.
Okay, and.
Gloria.
Pardon?
Gloria's here too.
I know, but every time I ask her, she says no.
Oh, we have a special meeting.
As town clerk, do you have anything?
Oh, I have nothing right now.
Okay.
She's so shy, she'd never speak up.
Well, you know, here I am, assuming again, and you know what happens when we assume. Uh, sorry, Gloria. Um. If the folks that signed your phone numbers over and stuff like that, um, if, if you have that. Can you make copies if anybody, can, can we give it to each, each of you?
So, if they have each others?
Right.
As long as everybody's good with that, comfortable with that.
Yeah, cause, uh, you know, I don't wanna infringe on anybody's privacy.
He's the only one that's saying.
You should have an email for him, though. He sent his Invia email to me.
No.
Oh, he did, okay.
To Lee? Uh, he just.
I'm sorry.
Well, I can keep a copy and send it out.
Right, and also get his number, phone number. I thought I had it, but I don't think I do. I have his email at home. Lord knows, he sends emails. Uh, Cash?
Yep.
Do you have any concerns?
Congratulations to Robert on his move. His addition or, was it masters?
Thank you.
Congratulations. I think Cash should buy you a beer. That's just an opinion.
Katie said margarita.
Uh, Bob, do you have anything?
Nah, just quick, number one, I didn't know until Jess, Cass just mentioned, congratulations, Robert, thank you. And second, did we ever hear back from Bill Blumer regarding the objectable noise ordinance?
Yes, we did today. Something today.
Yeah, he sent something out today, so I'll forward it for you.
Okay.
The long and the short of it is, he doesn't really have anything for us yet.
No.
Yeah, that's what I figured, but okay.
And the first response was not correct.
Yeah, I don't have anything else. Rob, do you? Uh, no, thank, but thank you for the comments. I appreciate that.
Art, do you have anything? No, I've got nothing. I've already congratulated him, so. All right, and, uh, here we know the business or concerns, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much, folks, for coming down.